Ready whenever you are.
So we're going to open and call to order this meeting, the planning commission, June 7th at 6:30.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so at this time, I will turn over to Angela for attendance, roll call.
Commissioner Corn. It's absent. This is his schedule change this week, and so he'll be, he'll be back in the next meeting. So Commissioner Melcher?
Yeah.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
And our new commissioner, Commissioner Lohman?
Here.
All right, so at this portion of our meeting, this is kind of a, an area for open public comment, stuff that is not on our agenda for the evening. If anybody has anything that they wish to bring up before planning commission. Again, in regards to things that are not on our agenda for tonight. All right, so that's that. So we're gonna open up application SD 21-01 at 6:32. So do you want me to go ahead and read this in, or do you want to just jump right in? Okay. On my eyeballs.
Yeah, well, just to update you at the, this SD 2101 was, had a public hearing last month. And it was, there were a number of corrections or changes that the planning commission was seeking. And ultimately, the decision was to continue that public hearing to tonight to allow the applicant to submit some revised plans. We just barely received those revised plans, and staff has not been able to finish our review of them yet. And so we, and the applicant, and we request that it be continued again to the, the next planning commission meeting, which would be June 17th. And this is kind of what we thought would happen, but we were hoping they'd be able to get their changes made in time. Unfortunately, they were not able to.
Okay, so do you want me to go ahead and read it in and then work on a motion to continue it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably.
Okay. So this is in regards to application SD 21-01. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 6.5 acre property into 26 lots, ranging in size from approximately 8,226 to approximately 9,950 square feet. Proposed subdivisions, average lot size is approximately 8,932 square feet. Approximately 8,226 square feet shall be reserved for a stormwater detention area. So. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close that hearing then for SD 2101 for discussion amongst commission. At 6:34. Yep. So I guess there's not much to do. Oh, yeah.
Uh. We just closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing in regards to that. Are you, are you just wanting information as far as when the next?
The next is 17.
Seventeen. Yes.
Maybe I can approach you in your office tomorrow. Because I have some questions about secret.
Okay. What next?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Minutes online for last weekend. I saw no updates. Same thing we had last month.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, come in in the morning and I will, I can still do that opportunity for me.
Okay, that'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm going to continue public hearing for SD 21-01 to June 17th, 2021.
I second.
Okay, I'll turn over to Angela for a roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal- Walthius? Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
So six, yes, one absent. We will continue to the June 17th, 2020, public hearing.
21.
Did I say?
You said 2020. It better not be 2020.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I don't want to go back there.
All right, in that case, we will move on to application CU 21-07. We'll open the public hearing at 6:36. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a home occupation, home business on their property. The home would, the home occupation would consist of a coffee roasting and online coffee retail operated by a resident of the property within the dwelling located on the property. The applicant expects to see little to no traffic for retail sales and no more than 10 people at a time for private tastings. The applicant will primarily contain parking on the subject property, but may utilize street parking for tastings. The applicant will be the only employee. So, read our little. Uh, the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward that criteria and described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. So with that being said, do any of the commissioners have any personal bias regarding this application?
No.
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 Any conflicts of interest?
No.
None.
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
No. No.
All right, so we will go ahead and turn it over to Angela for a staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Parker. As Chairman Parker read, this is a conditional use to establish a home occupation consisting of a coffee roasting and online retail operated, retail operated by the resident of the property within the dwelling. Go through some of the staff findings. The request does comply with the requirements of the underlying zone or overlay zone, the city codes and federal laws. The site size, dimensions, location, topography, and access are adequate for the needs of the proposed use. Considering but not limited to building size, parking, traffic, noise, vibration, exhaust and emissions, light and glare, erosion, odor, dust, visibility, safety, building landscaping, or street features. Staff findings, the applicant is requesting this conditional use permit in order to establish a home occupation of a coffee roasting and online coffee retail operated by the resident of the property within the dwelling located on the property. Per county survey number 22648, the easement serving the residences in the private access portion of Grape Court is 25 foot wide. With the asphalt pavement being about 19 feet wide, visitor parking would be assumed to be along the east side of the private driveway and should be limited to the east side. On-street parking in the public portion of Grape Court is limited, and typical cul-de-sacs, the curb line is occupied with driveway aprons. Per the public comment letter dated May 12, 2021, the surrounding neighbors are concerned about parking for private tastings. The neighbors state that there is little to no parking in the cul-de-sac. The Sweet Home Fire District is concerned about the off-street parking blocking emergency access. Staff finds that on the coffee roasting and online sales of coffee are adequate for the proposed use. However, on-street parking for tastings is not adequate in this location. And just as a note, there was an error, off-street parking should say on-street parking. Off-street parking is like in driveways, on-street parking is on the, in the cul-de-sac area. So there's three places that is, and that they should say on-street. Any negative impacts on the proposed use on adjacent properties and on the public can be mitigated through applications of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval that include but are not limited to those listed in this chapter. In the staff findings, applicant has proposed a coffee roasting and online coffee retail. The home occupation would consist of coffee roasting and online coffee retail operated by the resident of the property within the dwelling. The applicant expects to see little to no traffic for retail sales and no more than 10 people at a time for private tastings. The applicant will primarily contain parking on the subject property, but may utilize street parking for tastings. The applicant will be the only employee. Staff finds that the coffee roasting and online sales of coffee do not have negative impacts on the adjacent properties. However, on-street parking for tastings is not adequate in this location. Required public facilities have adequate capacity as determined by the city to serve the proposed use. Staff findings, as the proposed use has no employees, the client stated he will have little to no traffic for retail sales. There are adequate water and sewer services at the proposed location. However, staff does not recommend on-street parking for tastings. Home occupations must meet the following standards. The home occupation shall be secondary to the residential use. Staff findings, the applicant is the owner and resides on the subject property. The owner would be the sole participant in the business operation. The home occupation is secondary to the residential use. The application complies with this criteria. All aspects of the home occupation shall be contained and conducted within a completely enclosed building. Staff finds that the home occupation, according to the applicant, would be conducted within the existing house. The application complies with this criteria. No materials or mechanical equipment shall be used, which are detrimental to the residential use of the dwelling or nearby dwellings because of vibration, noise, dust, smoke, odor, interference with the electrical grid, radio or television reception, or other similar factors. Staff finds that the applicant indicates the home occupation will not be used, will not use any materials or mechanical equipment that will create any impacts on the neighborhood. The application complies with this criteria. Vehicles related to the home occupation shall be parked in a manner so as not to block any driveway or impede the safe flow of traffic. Staff finds that the applicant expects to see little or no traffic for retail sales and no more than 10 people at a time for private tastings. The applicant will primarily contain parking on the subject property, but may utilize street parking for tastings. As stated before, staff finds that the coffee roasting and online sales of coffee do not have impacts on the flow of traffic. However, on-street parking for tastings is not adequate for this location. In approving the conditional use permit application, the planning commission may impose, in addition to those standards and requirements, expressly specific, specified by this chapter, additional conditions determined to be necessary to assure that the proposed development meet the decision criteria, as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood and the city as a whole. These conditions may include but are not limited to the following. Requiring larger setbacks areas, lot area and/or lot depth or width, limiting the hour, hours, days, place, and/or manner of operation. Requiring site or architectural design features that minimize environmental impact such as noise, vibration, exhaust emissions, light, glare, erosion, odor, or dust. Limiting the building height, size, or lot coverage or location on the site. Designating the size, number, location, and/or design of vehicle access points, parking areas, or loading areas. Increasing the number of required parking spaces. Requiring street right-ofways to be dedicated in street, sidewalk curbs, planting strips, pathways, or trails to be improved, so long as findings in the development approval indicate how the dedication and/or improvements, if not voluntarily accepted by the applicant, are roughly proportional to the impact of the proposed development. Limiting, limiting the number, size, location, height, and lighting of signs. Limiting the setting standards for the location, design, or intensity of outdoor lighting. Requiring fencing, screening, landscaping, berms, drainage, water quality facilities, and other facilities to protect adjacent or nearby property. And the establishment of standards for their installation and maintenance. Designating sites for open space or outdoor recreation. Requiring the protection and preservation of existing trees, soils, vegetation, watercourses, habitat areas, drainage areas, and historic or cultural resources. Requiring ongoing maintenance of buildings or grounds, and grounds, pardon me, setting a time limit for which the conditional use is approved. Staff finds that the provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the planning commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the planning commission to determine if conditions are needed in order to ensure compliance with the decision, with the decision criteria, as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood and the city as a whole. As specified in Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.050, conditions could include but are not limited to expanding setbacks, limited hours of operation, requiring site or architectural design features, imposing additional sign standards, and so forth. If this application is approved, staff recommends the planning commission impose no conditions of approval, as there are no potential impacts which need mitigation except for the procedural conditions to assure the operation of the home occupation as represented by the applicant. A conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of planning commission approval, if the use has not been substantially established within that time period. As required under this section, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of planning commission approval, if the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80070A within that time period. As stated in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, the city planner may grant one, grant one extension up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approval period. Request other than a one-year request made prior to the expiration of the approval period must be approved by the planning commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. If the planning commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in section three, and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the land board, Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria above. Recommended conditions if an application is approved. The home occupation will be conducted in a manner consistent with the representations made by the applicant in the application and hearing process. All aspects of the home occupation shall be contained and conducted within a completely enclosed building as proposed in this application. Parking may occur outdoors in compliance with the Sweet Home Municipal Code. Three, the vehicles related to the home occupation shall be parked in a manner to not block any driveway or impede the safe flow of traffic. Four, private tastings be conducted in alternate location with adequate parking. Five, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits as requirements. Planning commission action and taking action on a conditional use permit, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on an applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in section four. And the appeal period, staff recommends that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of the notice of the decision is mailed. The order after the planning commission makes the decision, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval, if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. Number one, move to approve application CU 21-07, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Move to deny application CU 21-07, which includes adopting the findings of fact and specify, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, specify, or four other. Any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Yeah.
From the map, I can't tell exactly, how do you get to this property?
So do you, this is Grape Court right here? This is Ames Creek.
And then it seems. So right, right, my, right where my subject property bar is, sorry, there is a little cul-de-sac right in there. My subject property bar is right in the way of it, so you can't see it.
So off of this cul-de-sac right here, there is a, there is a road and another cul-de-sac right here.
Oh, okay, so what about this off to the right on that triangle where the red is? Is that another roadway, or what is that?
That's, uh, no, to the right, no, that's not a road, that's, I believe, a fence line.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Can I say something about the property itself or?
If, if it pertains to the criteria?
Yeah, I drove by there this afternoon, as well as right before the meeting. There was no cars parked in the driveway. And it's pretty much the driveway's set for three cars, and in the back part of it, the third spot of the driveway, there's a trailer that you, all off of a truck or so, if you went camping. This evening when I came before, there was two vehicles parked in the driveway. So there, it would be only one parking spot available for people. And there is, it isn't adequate at all to park on the street. Unless they got approved from the city to pave the rest of the grass in the front to make parking. Because on the right side of the end of the driveway, they could probably park one car, but after that first car, it runs into somebody's driveway, so they back into that car. And then the property may cross from their property. It'd be so tight if a car was parked in the, in the front yard on the road. They probably wouldn't be able to back out. Plus, the, the road is so narrow that if there was some cars parked there, emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to go down the street.
All right, so let's, uh, let's keep going on, and we'll finish our public portion and reclose it, and we can, we can discuss more amongst the commission, you know, doing our due diligence here. At this time, we would invite the applicant forward to speak in regards to this.
I don't see the applicant here.
I'm sorry, I haven't heard about what Hill Bridge Division has done.
Okay, hang, hang on just a second, let me get, let me get through this really quick. So the applicant is not here, so are there any proponents, people wishing to speak against, or in favor, I'm sorry, in favor of this application? This would be the time to come forward. Okay, any opponents, anybody speaking in opposition to this testimony?
You wanna wait just a minute and see what Brad is discussing?
I think he's just letting her know that we've already discussed.
She here for this?
No. No. The last one. Okay, and at this time, I would invite anybody to come forward to speak in, with neutral testimony, not in favor or against this current application. And as we have nobody in the room, there will be no rebuttal, because the applicant is not here. And we will close the public hearing at 6:53 for discussion amongst the planning commission. All right. So David, you were saying that you drove by there and you just, there's no.
There's no room at all. No, I'm, I'm 100% for somebody to open a business out of there with own, because that's basically the American dream.
Right.
They wanna open their own business, but for safety purpose, there's no valuable room for cars to park in front of their yard. And like the customer said, that they have no more than 10, well, that, if, if I would say two car, two people to a car, that's five cars at least.
Yeah.
And there'd be no room if somebody would have emergency. If an ambulance came down, you know, it's by seconds. You couldn't run over to the next door and ask somebody to move their car, because at that point, it could be someone's life at that moment. So, yeah, there's no room for medical ambulances. You park the, the people across the street could not pull their car out if they needed to get out of the yard.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're in general agreeance, at least with that point in regards to staff as far as parking. And that was one of the conditions, possible staff approved conditions of approval is that the private tastings be conducted in an alternate location. I mean, I, I see that kind of going this, I see that kind of going the same way.
Just with the concerns from the fire marshal and neighbors, and from what we could see from the maps, that, that seemed to be.
Yeah.
The business itself is adequate, it's just the tastings didn't seem like that was.
Right, we've got three residents signed this letter that live on Grape Court.
Was it three or more?
I think, I think three of them signed.
Three, yeah.
Would the city allow them to put more hard surface in their front yard for additional off-street parking?
Oh, that seems, it might be kind of cost prohibitive, but.
We'd have to, it would have to be something reviewed in kind of a building. It would, it would be a permit process, and they would have to pay for the permits, and we'd have to, I mean.
And hard surface goes against your lot coverage, or does it not?
Hard surface.
Yeah.
No.
If they paved it.
It doesn't go.
Just structures. Just.
Okay, so, I mean, they might be able to.
If I could use more hardtop with them, I'd change the use of the, could that be almost considered commercial then at that point?
No.
Not necessarily.
I've, I've done plenty of complete property line paving for concrete for handicap people. So just so they, because they have their entire yards containers and no grass. I mean, we did one out in Duck Hollow. So I don't think that's as much of the issue as it would be horrendously expensive for them at this point.
Well.
Just day and age.
Of course, my opinion.
You voice it.
First of all, an R1 zone deserves our utmost respect.
Absolutely.
And it's up to the applicant to make a pretty convincing story, conditions for us to not respect an R1 zone as it's outlined, number one. Number two, I look at this as a narrow street off of a cul-de-sac to another cul-de-sac. Looks to me like it was a second thought. I wonder how that happened in the first place? Probably on my watch.
I, I see those all the time.
I mean, I think this is battling in general.
Was not planned well in the very beginning. So that point number two, point number three, the cul-de-sac is small, the street is narrow. I agree that there is not room for 10 cars to park, or five, or even less than that. So the staff has recommended, if we do approve it, that they would do their testing, tasting, excuse me, at another location. I could get along with that. Otherwise, I think we should deny it.
So, am I on it? Okay. So I think it's reasonable, first of all, to ask the applicant to have tastings elsewhere, because there are venues in Sweet Home that are available for an event like that. It's not that the tasting has to be done at the location proposed, because nothing else is available. Second of all, given that this is a potentially controversial application, I wish that the applicant was here so that they could speak to whatever ideas they had for mitigating the issues that we're talking about right now. And I know they don't have to be here, however, it's clear that this was problematic. It's also from from what we know, the parking in front of the home may or may not be occupied. And if the home occupant is at home, you would expect there would be a vehicle there, which then diminishes the vehicle locations for people who want to come in for the tasting. So however you slice and dice it, um, given all the issues that we already talked about, about the size of the road and the fire department and everything, I agree that there's just no way that we could approve a tasting at this location or approval for more vehicles to be allowed to come there.
Also, I think that, you know, the applicant would have been here, they could have maybe gave a few other visions or something, maybe were not seen. They could have maybe said, well, the two vehicles that we have, we'll park them on 18th Street. Because right there at Grape and 18th Street, there is some easement that people park cars that they could say, okay, we're gonna have three people, but at that point, if they moved their cars there, and they have three spaces in front of their house, then at that point in the driveway, who says that they wouldn't get a fifth or sixth car and then have to park on the street? So, you know, at that point, even if they said they would move their car, if the road isn't big enough to park cars out in front of their yard.
So just to clarify, if we do approve this application this evening and adopt the proposed findings that staff has made in the staff report, that would then exclude the on-street parking, correct?
Yes, because the, it's in the conditions of approval, so if you approve it as written with the conditions, then yes, that's, that is what it would do. Yes, because the, it's in the conditions of approval. So if you approve it as written with the conditions, then yes, that's, that is what it would do.
Thank you.
But actually, if we look at the language under recommended conditions, number three, vehicles related to this home occupation shall, it didn't matter not to block any driveway. I think that makes it sound like we are approving parking. And we're really not. We're really saying that there should be no parking related to this business on that street. I just don't think it's done enough.
It would, it would have to say something about the daily operations to exclude.
So.
So what about?
They still could have, I guess, uh, i- if, if they don't have tastings there at that location, there is still, uh, the possibility then of someone picking up their order uh, or a delivery person dropping, coming to either drop off supplies or pick up supplies. And so that, that's going to be necessary no matter what, uh, regardless of whether they have tastings or not. And so I believe that's what number three, we can reword that though, if you would like.
Maybe something related to the, um, conducting of the business in a, in a regular day-to-day manner, whatever, excluding tastings.
I cannot hear you Eva.
Oh, I'm just nattering on Greg.
We're primarily concerned with just the parking for tasting.
Yeah, for more, more for the event.
People just coming in, grabbing their beans and leaving would, would be fine. Would you guys agree with that?
My problem with that, I don't have a problem with that, but if you have four or five people coming at the same time, then you're going to have four or five cars parked out front. And most, you know, they can guarantee a time limit that customer one would come at one, customer number two would come at two o'clock. For that time would be three o'clock. So there would only be one car there because at that point, it's like going to the grocery store. I go to the grocery store, my neighbor down the road wants to go to the grocery store too. So you, you can't anticipate how many cars are going to be parked out front at any moment.
So commissioners, the majority of his business is online. Um, and I can tell you that he does actually go to different businesses and delivers beans. Cause he's come here before. Um, and so I think there's going to be more, I, I don't know for sure. But according to the application that he gave us, the majority of his business is going to be online, not at his home. Not saying that people won't pick up beans, but just that was what the application was. So.
So it'll be, it'll be more to the exception of the rule for him to have people at the house.
So to play a little bit of devil's advocate regarding that, because the applicant's not here, we're making assumptions about how he's conducting his business, which in this case I'm averse to doing. So.
One option commissioners, if, if, as a suggestion, if this is a concern to you, you could add a condition essentially, or modify a condition number three that essentially states that any, um, any vehicles coming to the site relate on business matters would be staggered so as to not, not have more than one there at a time.
Yeah, that would be, I think that would be good to articulate that.
I think that, the only thing wrong with that too is I have a doctor appointment at two o'clock. I get there a half hour early waiting to go in. So if customers could do the same thing, you know, if they have them. So then at that point, you could have two or three cars early thinking like, well, I thought I'd come early because I forgot I had an appointment somewhere else. I think we should almost say you can have your online business, but customer pickup. I, 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 I think maybe we should not allow customer pickup unless he meets him at a certain location. Because once, I think, once we approve customer pickup, then next month, things can change on this, this thing and three or four cars can be parked out there. And then I think at that point, it could cause hazard, case emergency vehicle didn't need to go down there on that road.
We've had similar instances in the past where we've specified in there that there would be one client at a time. Whether or not we want to assign that to, you know, per hour or not. But that has come up in the past, you know, not to exceed one, more than one customer.
It's hard to predict the volume of business they'll attract. Typically, home occupations don't have that much traffic.
Right.
But, but that's, that's all guesswork and, and it's possible that the applicant might not even know. They're probably hoping that their business is wildly successful and, and they have a ton of, of activity. But, um, but likely if they got to that point, they'd be looking for digs elsewhere.
Could we possibly modify number three to vehicles related to the home occupation shall be limited to one at a time and parked in a manner so not to block any driveway or impede the safe flow of traffic?
Yeah, I think, um, that that's reasonable. I'd like to have some language like that, but I don't want to get too regulated because how are we going to enforce it? So I think if we just say something like one at a time, at least that gives the intention of what our concerns are and.
And if there's a violation, it would.
At least there's some language that they can base the complaint on.
Let me, uh, read this back to you to see if this is adequate. So vehicles related to the home occupation shall be limited to one at a time and be parked in a manner not to block any driveway or impede the safe flow of traffic.
Yeah.
There, that, that, that gives you the one vehicle to the business and then, you know, not including the cars for normal occupancy.
So if, uh, if that's satisfactory, uh, any of you would just make the motion to reflect the, uh, the conditions of approval as the, the recommended conditions as modified in this meeting.
All right.
So I make a motion to approve application CU two-one dash zero seven, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval as modified, listed in section four of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision. And hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I will turn it over to Angela for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius? Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
And Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Okay, six eyes, one absent, motion passes. With the addition to, um, condition number three.
All right.
Did I just ask a question, um, related to the comments from the neighbors about the recreational vehicle that was occupied? Has that been forwarded to the compliance officer?
I have been out for the last week, so I, I did not do that unless Angela.
I hadn't, not yet.
But I, but I will be talking to him about that.
Thank you.
All right. So pretty easy night. We'll, uh, go over to staff for any updates on upcoming planning projects.
So the, I don't have any updates other than to, just to talk about the, um, development code that we're still working our way through. And of course, Commissioner Lowman, uh, has joined us. So, um, probably did. I assume you've, you've talked with Angela a little bit about what's going on or current activities or are you?
Scheduled.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, since this meeting was so light, I was hoping that we could get some done on the, on the development code review if you all are prepared for that. But other than that, I don't think we have any projects that are.
No, I, I received seven new applications this week. I was out in Colorado the week before, but, um, and then our department is also picking up the building department right now. Molly did retire. And so, um, we're doing building and finding.
We'll shorthand it right now. But we have applicants and we'll be interviewing them shortly.
For Molly's position?
And, um.
Where we were.
Yeah, where were we? Question.
We finished our definition.
I think we finished the definitions. So the next article one.
You're busted.
Are you fine?
I didn't bring my zoning ordinance book.
We have an extra copy.
I know.
Let me.
You're reading them so I can just hear.
True.
Comment.
I can, uh, but we can basically print article one.
Seriously, I'm, I'm okay just listening.
If, if you're comfortable with that, we can, we can move forward with that.
Yeah.
But if you like, it wouldn't take very much time to print off a copy of just this article.
Uh, Commissioner Walthius.
We can put it, we can put it in Henry and then we can both see it.
Problems solved.
How did I get so lucky?
All right. If you all, if you all are comfortable.
Right in the middle.
All right. So Commissioner Lowman, just to bring you up to speed, because this is essentially a new, entirely new code, the, the only real way to review it is to just read it out loud and discuss it as, uh, as things come up. And so, um, Angela and I will be taking turns reading. And if there are any, uh, anything that's said or anything that you read that is concerning to you or that you think merits conversation, feel free to jump in. This, these, this portion of the meeting has been, we've been handling them more like workshops, not really a formal, uh, structure. And so, uh, when anyone has any comments or desire for changes, we can, we can stop and address those at that time. So don't be a stranger. All right. You want to start or should I? All right, I'll start. I'm gonna, everybody okay? Take my mask off. I'm just gonna.
Absolutely.
It'll be a lot easier to read and we don't have any on against members here to worry about. So. We are now on article one, which is tab two.
Article one.
Article one, general provisions. And, uh, just a little, a little background. This article is mainly just dealing with the structure of how the code works. Uh, so there likely won't be very much in the way of, um.
Are we article two?
Did we read article one?
Article one was definition.
Oh, no. Um, okay. You are correct. Never mind. We are on tab four. So we're on article two. There we go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for correcting me. Article two, zones and zoning regulations, seventeen point zero six, city comprehensive plan and establishment of zones. Adoption of comprehensive plan. A, the purpose of this chapter is to promote the public health, safety and general welfare of the city of Sweet Home and to assist in implementing the adopted statewide planning goals. B, the comprehensive plan as amended and approved by ordinance by the city of, uh, by the city council is the official guide for decisions related to land use and by this ref, by this reference is made a part thereof. And for any of you commissioners who want to read it, the comprehensive plan is available on our website. Uh, and I believe your binders. Hmm, is there a copy of the comp plan in their binders? I don't recall, but if you need a hard copy, please let us know. It's been a number of years since it's been updated, but we still have to follow it.
I, rumor has.
We, we were, unfortunately, the budget will, will not include funding for our, our comp plan update.
But you'll do it for free on a voluntary basis. It's your good natured.
Sure, sure.
Still consistent with our outdated.
So y- yes and no. Um, yes, and it is consistent, but there are a number of, uh, properties that are, as, as any city that, that are not in compliance with the current code because they've essentially been grandfathered in. So we do.
Most of it has in, has to do with RC zoning though, right?
Uh, for this code or for?
No, for the comprehensive.
No, I mean, uh, because all the other zones are in there too, uh, as well. But we, we do periodically see zone changes, um, that are properties that are out of compliant, that are, they're trying to change it to something different from the current zoning map, but it is, would be something that would fit with the comprehensive plan. And we will continue to see plenty of those. There's not really a way around it right now. Okay. Seventeen point zero six point zero two zero, classification of zones. For the purposes of this title, the following zones are established. And I will read the zone, the abbreviation, uh, the name of the zone and then, or the type of zone and then the abbreviation. Oh, those are in two columns. So I'll read the zone and then the abbreviation. Residential low density are one, residential medium density are two. And by the way, this is a correction because our two used to be our high density zone. And then our, our medium density was three. So it went low, high, medium, which is really awkward and strange. And so this, this code corrects that, which is really nice.
My OCD, thanks.
Yeah. Residential high density are three, residential mixed use MU, commercial central C one, commercial highway C two, commercial neighborhood C three, industrial I, public facility PF, recreation, commercial RC or mixed use employment MUE. Uh, that's a proposed, uh, proposed option to change the RC zone to that. Natural resources overlay is NRO, flood hazard overlay FHO, historic property overlay HPO. Seventeen point zero six point zero three zero, location of zones. The boundaries for the zones listed in this title are indicated on the city zoning map of two thousand and three and all amendments made, which are adopted by reference. The boundaries shall be modified in accordance with, in accordance with zoning map amendments, which shall be adopted by reference.
So you all should have zoning maps in your original binders that you got, your, your map zones. If you do not have them in there, let me know and I'll make sure you get them.
Seventeen point zero six point zero four zero, zoning maps. A zoning map or zoning map amendment adopted by this title or by an amendment thereto shall be prepared by authority of the city council. The map or map amendment shall be dated with the effective date of the, of the ordinance that adopts the map or map amendment. A certified print of the adopted map or map amendment shall be maintained in the office of the city manager as long as this title remains in effect. And that's probably something that we may want to just modify to, shall be maintained at city hall. Just because the office of the city manager handles a ton of stuff. That would be my, my suggestion at least.
Could we say where official city records are kept?
We could, we could do that as well.
Probably all kept in the same location or?
Um, it depends. Uh, official city records are kept on the servers, which are in the IT closet. And then there's also hard copy files in several places throughout city hall. So maybe at city hall would probably be the most descriptive.
What is the official copy online?
Uh, it's available online. Yes. Seventeen point zero six point zero five zero, zoning of annexed areas. All areas annexed to the city shall continue to be zoned under the existing county zoning unless the area or part of the area is specifically placed in a zone or zones by the city council after receiving and considering the recommendation, recommendations of the city's planning commission. Seventeen point zero six point zero six zero, location of zone boundaries. A, boundaries. The boundaries for the zoned list, zones listed in this development code are indicated on the zoning map of the city of Sweet Home, which is hereby adopted by this reference and hereinafter referred to as the zoning map in this development code. The boundaries shall be modified only in accordance with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan, land use designations and policies with zoning, uh, with zoning, zoning, that's a typo, zoning, zone map amendments, with zone map amendments and adopted by ordinance. So I, I believe we need to cross out zoning. B, uh, zoning map. The official zoning map shall be maintained on file in the office of the city manager as long as this development code remains in effect. Amendments thereto shall be endorsed on the map with the number of the ordinance by which the change was made. Failure to revise the map shall not affect the validity of any zone change. C, boundary resolution. The city council shall resolve any, resolve any dispute over the exact location of a zone boundary. In interpreting the location of such boundaries on the Sweet Home zoning map, the city council shall rely on the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan map and the following guidelines for the location of zoning, zoning zone boundaries. I wonder if there's something I don't know, uh, that Walt stuck that in there. I wonder if there's something I don't know that Walt stuck that in there. Yeah, let's check with him on that. One rights of way boundaries indicated as approximately following the center lines of streets, highways, railroad tracks, alleys, irrigation canals, bridges or other right of way shall be construed to follow such center lines. Whenever any public right of way is lawfully vacated, the lands formerly within the vacated right of way shall automatically be subject to the same land use designation that is applicable to the lands abutting the the vacated areas. Two partial lot and tract. Boundaries indicated as approximately following the boundaries of a parcel lot or track shall be construed as following such boundaries. Three jurisdiction boundary boundaries indicated as approximately following a city or county boundary or the urban urban growth boundary shall be construed as following said boundary. Four natural features. Boundaries indicated as approximately following a river stream drainage channel drainage basin topographic contour or other changeable. Natural feature not corresponding to any feature listed in subsections C one through three. Immediately above shall be construed as following such feature.
So just to be consistent in number B under zoning map, it also says a file maintained in the office. So that will be changed as well.
I think we should change that to maintain that City Hall.
Are we? Sorry. Are we going to look at making that change? It's kind of threw out.
Yeah, well.
City manager.
Right. Seventeen point zero eight uses general. Seventeen point zero eight point zero one zero interpretations of uses. A types of uses within each zone uses are classified as permitted, special permitted and conditional. Further, you uses are functionally classified by description of the particular activity such as single family residence. B. Interpretation of uses. Where a use is not defined in chapter seventeen point zero one. The words of this development code describing such use are to be given their ordinary accepted meaning ordinarily accepted meaning except where the context in which they are used otherwise clearly requires an alternative interpretation. C prohibited uses a use not specifically identified as permitted specially permitted or conditionally permitted within a zone or otherwise allowed through interpretation shall be considered a prohibited use. D. City authorization. The city may permit uses in a zone similar to uses permitted outright in that zone. Seventeen point zero eight point zero two zero permitted uses all zones. The following uses and activities are permitted in all zones. A. Placement and maintenance of underground or above ground wires, cables, pipes, guys, support structures, pump stations, drains and detention basins. Within rights of ways by public agencies and utility companies for telecommunications or electrical power transmission. Or transmission of natural gas petroleum products geothermal water, water wastewater sewage and rainwater. B railroad tracks and related structures and facilities located within rights of ways controlled by railroad railroad companies. C surface travel lanes, curbs, gutters, drainage ditches, sidewalks, transit stops landscaping and related structures and facilities located within rights of ways controlled by a public agency. D expansion of public right of way and widening or adding improvements within the right of way provided the right of way is not expanded to more width. Then prescribed for the street in the public facilities segment of the comprehensive plan. Seventeen point zero eight point zero three zero prohibited uses. The following uses are prohibited regardless of the underlying zone. And. I don't have that page.
A. The use of private property for burial of human remains and family burial grounds. B breeding raising and or keeping of swine. C commercial feedlots, dairies and auction yards for livestock D rendering plants slaughterhouses and meatpacking plants.
I'm gonna keep on.
Any conversation on that section? Or any other any other uses that you want to prohibit?
I was thinking about rendering down some animals in my backyard. I can't.
Unlawful activity?
Well, that's usually covered under other codes. And so usually you don't need to specify those, but. Any other uses of land that are concerning.
Why did we specifically mention swine?
I think that's that that's in the in it's a common thing. But I couldn't tell you exactly. Why that and not any and not others, but I do believe most in our culture, at least it's usually. Seen as as especially something that you wouldn't want to have in the city.
Unhygienic.
Like isn't it an health issue?
But that would be similar to other livestock as well. But for some reason, it calls out swine specifically, which it could be because of just the health aspect.
Are pet pigs considered swine?
I think the pot bellies has been set aside through something.
Yeah, that would be that would be different than a than a operation that. Because how does it put there? It's a.
Keeping of.
Keeping up.
It's breeding, raising or in keeping up swine. So and I'd have to review our code compliance because we do have in our in our code compliance criteria, which I. It talks about different livestock, how much you can have and how many. So I can find that and send that out tomorrow and see if there's a definition of that.
That's a good question. I we haven't had really any complaints about pet pigs or or promoters of pet pig.
Yeah, I think it has.
Any use not in compliant with the city's. Code municipal code.
I think a lot of that has to do with actually raising it for for slaughter and market purposes more so than pet purposes.
Yeah.
Just just to note, we do have. A pig that lives on Twenty Second Avenue.
We had we had a pig.
I had one too. Walked it like a dog.
Pot bellied pig. We were just pigs sitting.
So what I'll do tomorrow is I'll look at our our code compliance codes and see because there's things about horses, chickens, cows, how much and what you can have in. City limits and how much land you have to have. So I'll look that up and send that out. That might be in there, too. I don't know.
Yeah, it's it's not listed in the definition of pets. So. So. I guess a strict interpretation under this would be that pet pigs are not allowed. Unless we want to carve out a.
I think I think though it does have it hearkens back to something in the Oregon State Code about raising them for slaughter and. And market purposes. I think it actually says market purpose.
And and we could certainly add that 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 language is quite easy to add, just say for market purposes. But on the other hand. Then then you got to be careful if someone raising it for their own consumption. They might just eat a lot of pork and which case they might be having the same effect.
Well, yeah.
See also generally says commercial feedlots and doesn't doesn't refer to animals. So that could be pigs as well.
Livestock.
So if you'd like a modification there, we can we can look into that further.
Okay, you pig lovers.
And I'll look.
Fine, I was.
Yeah, I'll look into the code because we do have code specifying, you know, chickens, geese, you know, all those different rabbits. So I will look into the livestock code and figure out what it actually says.
And I know for some.
Just research and then mark it so we can come back and talk about it.
I will.
And then you see why I can't have a falcon or burbitt prey. I know.
Yeah. There's my page. For some reason, my section five. Has nothing in it, but first page and we'll.
I desperately want a new falcon and I can't.
I gotta repeat.
I have one little monkey.
Oh.
Actually, you can have a capuchin. Tiny monkeys.
You're in the wrong section.
Oh, this page was in the wrong second. I have two of them. Oh, well.
Okay. Okay, I'll just keep going on.
That brings us to tab.
Six.
Tab six.
All right. Seventeen point one zero residential low density zone R one seventeen one zero point zero one zero. The purpose of the R one zone. Is to provide areas suitable and desirable for single family homes associated. Public service uses. And duplexes on corner lots. The R one zone is the most appropriate in areas which have developed or will develop with single family homes at a density which warrants provide provision of public water and sewer facilities. Seventeen point one zero point zero two zero permitted uses. The following uses when developed under the applicable development standards in the development code are permitted in the R one zone. A. Single family dwelling. B duplex on a corner lot where each living unit has access from a separate street. C residential care homes licensed by the state of Oregon. D daycare facility day nursery for twelve or fewer children. E open space and parks identified in the city's adopted master parks plan. Seventeen point one zero.
Parks master plan. Switch them.
Okay. Okay, seventeen point one zero point zero three zero special uses. And if you are not familiar with the code, this is new. The special uses is a new section. So.
This is. This is in regards to adopting some of the language and stuff. As if we were to be a city over ten thousand in population is that.
Uh, no, actually, these these are.
Duplexes. This is just new.
This is just. Yeah, this isn't contingent upon us. Getting to that population level.
Are these uses identified specific with a particular review process? Like, are these all? Administrative reviews that are listed in here?
The this code should have indicate have a process for the special uses because it it starts by outlining what's permitted, what's special, what's conditional, and then other times it gives. The process for approval of those things.
Okay.
And each one of these, as you'll see, as I read through them, it does reference, you know, property line adjustments pursuant to this code, you know, so I'll read through them, but. It just means that there's other codes that apply to it from my understanding of when we did our review of it. That was my understanding of it. So.
I wonder if a daycare facility shouldn't be maybe a conditional use. Other than permitted outright.
Like a home occupation?
Yeah. Other words, it would take a review to. Say it again.
Well, it'd be a traffic in chat. I would say for a neighborhood.
Especially the daycare, you know, like.
Very definitely.
When I wanted the coffee. Daycare thing. On a narrow road too that could be a hazard, you know, when seven o'clock in the morning, ten cars are dropping your kid off so they can get to work. That could be a, you know, that should be something should be put in that. You know, parking.
In other words, if it was a conditional use, at least it would give. The planning commission a chance to review the pros and cons of it.
Keep in mind that, well. If it's if it gets into it gets. A little bit tricky when you're. Talking about someone operating out of their home as opposed to building something specially designed for that purpose.
So right.
If if someone was acquired an empty a bare lot in a R one zone.
They could.
And said, I want to put in a daycare facility. They would have to comply with parking requirements and building code and and things like that that would. Have to they'd have. There's a lot of requirements they would have to meet to be able to handle. The the number of children they are projecting that they would. Have there.
So so we're looking at this as as a daycare as a standalone. Business allowed in an R one zone, not a daycare operating out of it.
Well, that's the question is that this that's something we probably would want to keep in mind because the. If if we don't have. I believe there's there's a when it comes to home occupations and things like that, this. This code is going to be different than what our code has been because there's a lot of conditional uses that frankly don't need to come before the planning commission. If you're having if you're operating a business that doesn't have anybody, any customers coming. And no impacts to the neighborhood, then there's no reason for them to bring that home occupation before you.
Right.
Uh, unless there's some impact on the neighborhood. If you have customers coming in, then it's different. And and I believe this code has that in it, which we'll we'll get to. But. If you change that procedure, it's something that we'll have to look into how how that would be treated because. If some if we adopt this and someone comes in and wants to convert a home to a daycare facility. Then, yeah, we don't have ways of if it's outright permitted, we may not be able to to make sure that the parking is there and so forth.
Let me just state as a fact. Our children, when they were that size. Actually participated in. Similar activities in two different homes. And we along with the eleven others, ten others, nine others. Picked them up and delivered them every day. So it happens.
Yeah, and it may not have the impact that it it's going to vary from. From from business to business or from person to person. Certainly.
But but these. These daycare centers or pre whatever you want to call it. Were actually operated. One of them was in a full basement. Of the home. And the other one was kind of in a converted garage. Area. But I think it still gives us an opportunity to review it.
This C also, it says residential care. Is that like an AOF? An adult living facility?
Residential care homes and C. Yeah, that's that's defined in the definition. I believe which. Yeah. But just to as a reminder, residential care home is it's governed by ORS one ninety seven. A residential facility is a residential treatment or training home or adult foster home licensed by the state, which provides care, treatment or training for five or fewer individuals. And which may also provide housing for staff persons who provide services to those individuals. For the purposes of this development code, a residential care home is considered to be a form of a single family dwelling unit.
Check also require adequate parking and stuff.
Um, that. So if it that's the just the definition, it doesn't go into the parking. So if if a if it's listed as a permitted use.
So even if it's under outright permitted, most of these things, especially if they're going to alter it for different things or a care home, has to go through the building department in the building department. They get a permit. We have to my I personally in planning have to look at how many parking spaces per what business they are. There are so many required. Per square feet. So that gets covered in the building process. So even if it's outright permitted in planning, if there's any alteration to any of it for these purposes, then it does get reviewed through that permit process.
In the case of a daycare or a day nursery, it says twelve or fewer children. So you would expect that at the most you have twelve vehicles. Coming to that twice a day coming to that location. Which is certainly is more than your average home. But it's also depending on how they're spaced out, might not be that big a big a deal. But again, it's. It could be an issue. Residential care homes typically don't have that the drop off and the pickup kind of.
Yeah, it's more of a long.
They live there.
Of a long term.
So can we put an asterisk on this? And come back to it.
Sure.
When necessary.
Yeah. We'll we'll gather some more information on on what our options are and and bring those back to you.
Seventeen point one zero zero three zero special uses. The following uses when developed under the special development requirements are permitted in the R one zone. A property line adjustments subject to the provisions of in chapter seventeen point nine two. Partitions subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point five eight. C subdivision sub subdivisions subject to provisions in chapter seventeen point five eight. D plan development subject to the provisions of of chapter seventeen point six six zero. E cottage cluster development and subject to provisions in chapter. Seventeen point six two. F manufactured homes on individual lots subject to provisions in chapter seventeen point six four. G home occupation subject to the provisions of chapter seventeen point six eight. H residential accessories structures subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point seven zero. I residential accessory dwelling subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point seven two. J temporary uses subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point seven four. Seventeen point one zero zero four zero conditional uses. The following uses require approval of a conditional use permit. A cemetery, B church religious or club lodge fraternal organization. C community center. D hospital and medical clinics. E private golf course, country club or recreational club. F public school. And private schools except for trade schools. G public utility facility.
Just a real quick on B, I believe that should be religious institution, church comma religious institution comma. Because it it just seems kind of. That or I don't know what.
I don't need I circled it because I wasn't sure what that word was for.
Yeah, I would. It was probably should be church religious institution or club lodge. Yeah, I, I would, it was probably should be church, religious institution or club lodge.
I think the or is just in the wrong place.
There's, there's something, yeah, there's something weird going on, so we'll, we'll get some clarification on that from Walt.
Okay, H bed and breakfast establishment subject to provisions in chapter seventeen point seven six. I secondary use on a lot without a primary use. J duplex is not located on a corner lot. K amateur radio, police and fire antennas. And just to go back, the duplexes, so once we do hit ten thousand population duplexes will be allowed on lots other than just corner lots. So that's part of.
Are we moving forward with going ahead and adopting that so we don't have to go back and do it? I know there had been some discussion prior.
The intent and what we talked about was having a, an ordinance prepared that would be, um, triggered by that, by that population change.
Set in place and then as soon as we click over.
That's, that's the intent, uh, we're trying to figure out the right mechanism for making that happen.
So also in that regard, under H, under bed and breakfast, um, we've talked in the past about Airbnb, which is not specifically the breakfast part of the B and B, but down the road, we could see that that would be an issue. And so having some language bed and breakfast and whatever the generic wording for Airbnb.
Make short term, short term rentals. Yeah, it certainly could be a concern down the road. I've heard about major impacts in other communities that those have had.
All right, um, K amateur radio, police and fire antennas. L other uses compatible with the purpose and intent of the zone and whose offsite impacts would not significantly exceed those of other conditionally permitted uses listed in this section. Seventeen point one zero point zero five zero density regulations. A single family and manufactured homes, no more than one dwelling per lot or parcel other than an approved residential accessory dwelling unit. B duplex, no more than one duplex per corner lot or parcel. C residential development, maximum of five point four dwelling units per net acre. Seventeen point one zero point zero six zero dimensional standards. A useless, useless, pardon me, A unless otherwise required by this development code, the following minimum dimensional standards shall be required for all development in the R one zone. Minimum lot area and width, single family dwelling, manufactured home, seven thousand square feet. Duplex, nine thousand square feet. Other uses significant to meet, sufficient to meet density and development requires, requirements. Minimum width at building line, seventy feet. Uh, minimum setbacks, front yard fifteen feet, garage and carport, twenty feet to the entrance. Side yard interior, five feet minimum, any side, twelve feet, both sides combined. Side yard street fifteen feet, rear yard fifteen feet. Maximum structure height, primary building thirty feet, accessory building twenty feet at the roof apex and maximum lot coverage forty percent.
So some of these numbers are different.
Yeah.
Yes, and we, staff has reviewed them based on kind of our current lot with, you know, what we have left and just different things that we've seen in our approval process, so, um, just from a staff point of view, these are adequate.
And I guess these are, um, consistent with other communities, seven thousand square foot for a lot size, for instance.
Every, every community varies on these. Most, most, uh, changes in codes are tending toward smaller lots, uh, a smaller minimum lot, I should say. And, and, and smaller, smaller setback, minimum setback. So this is certainly one of those areas where, um, we put together the, work with the consultant to put together the draft and it's, this is really probably an area that should be a part of your discussion. What, what are you comfortable with? What do you think a reasonable amount? The, when it comes to a lot of developments now, when, when it's something that's zoned R one, they're trying to go as, just to make it pencil out, they're trying to go as, as close to the line as they can possibly get. But, uh, the question is, do you want to let them? I will say that the, the minimum width of building line here is seventy feet. That pre, that in the current code is eighty feet and has been a, that's been a, a real hindrance to a lot of.
So. We have a lot of long skinny lots.
Yeah, can you, can you clarify exactly where that dimension lands? Cause I personally have drawn a lot of house plans where the house is thirty-five to fifty feet wide.
So we'll, we'll go with like a weird shaped lot. You know, like that. Okay, so.
Where's the street?
Uh, we'll say the street's like right here, this is the street. Sorry, I know, we need like a marker board in here or something, oh, we do have one kind of, okay, so you have a weird lot like this. Um, they want to bring their driveway maybe in this way a little bit. So your house sits like this. This is the front of building line right here, doesn't matter what this is, doesn't matter what it is this way.
Full width.
So it's the width of where the front of the house.
So it's not, it has nothing to do with the physical size of the structure itself.
No.
It's based on its placement.
If it's a, if it's a perfectly square lot on a perfectly straight street, then it's going to be the same dimension as the front property line. But if it deviates in any way, it's going to be measured based on that front face of that house. And depending on your, some of the lots that we have, that being kind of long and skinny, it really can hamper things quite a bit because somebody, you know, you can build a house and do in lots of different dimensions and requiring that eighty feet can really throw things off.
In a cul-de-sac where you have those triangular. Your building would have to, wouldn't be allowed up in that front triangle, it have to go back far enough to where you meet that setting.
So it, it can, it can adversely affect how houses are placed on a lot. I mean, for instance, I've my own house, I live at the end of a cul-de-sac. And because of this, the odd pie shaped lot that I have, the, the way and the type of house plan that was put there, uh, the house is pointing, frankly, I would like it if it was pointing a different direction, but it's pointed the way it is. And it results in us having a really large front yard and a really tiny backyard or a really large side yard. You know, some of those things can be a little bit awkward when you have a, a requirement like that.
So where does this land us with smaller lots that will have, I guess, a, a side or two sides that are less than seventy square, less than seventy feet?
So part of it too is we do have the pre-existing non-conforming, um, criteria. So a lot of time, when you have pre-existing non-conforming, um, as far as the front of building line goes, it, it's, you can't, it's, it's set, you know, so it's one of those things where what you'd have to do from that point is the, right now it's eighty feet. So if the, the width of the lot's only fifty feet, that's what they have. You can't make him go eighty feet because you can't widen it. But what they have to do from there is make sure that all of their setback requirements are set. So whatever's pre-existing non-conforming sticks, but they still, if they want to place a house on there, all the setbacks have to be.
So in a new subdivision, you couldn't have a lot narrower than seventy feet.
Not.
If it was perfectly square lot.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm, and this is just me, but I'm going back to property I had in Newport and it was thirty-five by fifty-five was the lot size? So, I mean.
You'd find that in the higher.
So yeah, I was gonna say, so you have to remember, this is R one.
We're sticking with R one.
This is our one zone for now, so, and it's, and, and when we were looking at this and I, I, well, I'll speak for myself. When I was looking at this, I was looking at the applications that I get in, um, and then the building per, per, and kind of what the average is of what we have and some of the issues that we have had, you know, with the pre-existing skinny lots, um, and this to me was kind of a good average, um, from what I've seen over the last three years, um, you know, we don't want it too narrow, but we also, the eighty, like, um, Blair said, the eighties was becoming a hindrance of what we have left here. Um, and so we want to make sure that people can build on their lots and, um, and that. But again, that's staff, um, and you guys are, you know, can make that decision, so.
So the main, the main differences here, uh, from the existing code is the, uh, the lot size, eight thousand down to seven thousand. And then what are duplexes?
Well, however, the duplexes are the same, so if it's an R one zone duplex would be eight thousand also. So this actually makes it to where if you want to put a duplex in, you have to have a little bit larger lot than the eight thousand. So I think between the single family and duplex, it kind of averages out. So if you want to do a duplex on a corner, you're required to have a little bit more space to do it.
Yeah, and so those things and the, the minimum width of building line are the, the main things that are different. The setbacks, I believe, are all.
Yeah, the only.
The same.
Front yard is fifteen, but then you have the garage or carport to twenty, so you're almost, you know, you're just making up that five foot difference by, maybe if your doorway is back a little bit. So, uh, the rest of them, um, the side yard, it's, right now it's five and thirteen. Um, so five and twelve is only a one foot difference, um, the rest of them are the same, so.
Do you want to think about those or discuss them?
So just as a point, as another point though, if we look at the single family dwelling, minimum lot size, seven thousand square feet. I just looked up how many square feet there are in an acre. And so you could put six homes on an acre. And on the previous page under residential development, we have a maximum of five point four dwelling units per acre, so that's about the same kind, sort of.
Yeah. Yeah, the, usually they're, they're fairly similar because you expect that you'd, you'd lose some property to streets and, and such when you have that development.
And I just have one question on the minimum setbacks front yard, that we have a twenty foot now.
We do, but we don't have one, so the garage and carport, twenty feet to entrance, so that's new. So you still, so there's just that five, so if your doorway and maybe your garage comes back a little bit, so it's, it's just about a five foot difference.
So I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah.
Is it different? Do we care?
Well, it, it does.
We had a twenty foot to garage door.
It's, it's, it's twenty foot period from setback.
Right, current, okay.
Yeah.
The, the, the difference that this makes though is that it'll, it allows for homes that have a door closer to the street than the garage door. And so it does add to some, it makes, it makes the neighborhood look less like a parking lot. And, and more like a neighborhood. I, I would, yeah, I, I mean, that's the main reason why you have a rule like that is to, to kind of make it more pedestrian friendly, to make it more, um.
More inviting.
More inviting, I mean, I, I don't know about you, but I, I don't like having the front face of my house just being a giant garage door. Um, it, it's not.
It's pretty much all the eighties and most of the.
But unfortunately, that's the house I live in. Cause that's what was there, but yeah.
So we can, what we can do is I can just put a note that you guys are going to, if you want to review these a little bit more and then come back to them. Um, and look at the old code compared to this, um, we can kind of come back and.
Well, or at least just bring it up for discussion, and if we don't have discussion, then we'll just.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and there's a number of, of things like this that are, are purely a matter of plugging in numbers. And so when we get to the, the end of the process of reviewing all of this, you'll have a motion to basically, uh, recommend it, uh, as it's currently constituted at that point. And so there'll, there'll be plenty of opportunities in the meantime to say, well, let's adjust this or let's adjust that. And you'll find that this, this, the format of this code is very, uh, formulaic and every, every section is going to have the same criteria. And so you'll be able to ultimately look at different zones and compare their sizes and kind of make a, a judgment call at that point when you, you know, you think your density should be different or setbacks should be different and have them change kind of, uh, on a, so that the zones are, are related to each other in the way they're adjusted.
And just so you know our process, so, um, after we have our meetings, we go back and I take the digital version of it and we make notes in it so that any of the comments or whatnot, so I'm not striking anything out, but we make comments off to the side of what we've discussed so that when we can go back and look at it and talk to Walt about it and, um, before we make any like official changes, so I'm not, I think that we discussed that with you with how we do that, but I just want to make sure that you guys knew that, so. I'm thinking as we get close to eight o'clock, I'll finish out this section, um, and then we'll call it. So B on a flag lot or similarly configured lot, the inset front yard setback shall be a minimum of fifteen feet, that's currently the code, so. C regardless of the side or rear lot require, rear yard requirements of the zone and accessory structure, excluding attached accessory dwelling may be built to within five feet of the side or rear lot line, provided the structure is more than seventy feet from the street, abutting the front yard and twenty feet from the side, from the street abutting the side street. That's also current code. Um, seventeen point one zero zero seven zero development standards. All development in the R one zone shall comply with the applicable provisions of this development code. The following references additional development requirements. A off-street parking, all single family homes shall require a garage or carport and an, and in addition, provide two hot, hard surface parking spaces. Other uses identified in the zone shall comply with the provisions in chapter seventeen point four four. B signs, sign shall conform.
Go ahead.
That, does that include remodels?
For the off-street parking?
Yes.
You mean like the, or the garage or carport?
Yeah, like on, I was talking to you on that house on twelfth avenue where they slipped by and got by with gravel driveway instead of hard surface parking? Because that was not caught in the building permit.
Yeah, actually, and I, I believe, uh, on a side note, uh, in that particular one, they, they said that they were going to go back and pave it. Um, I'm not sure if they have or not.
They have not.
Okay, but yes, that was, that was missed on that one. We, in our current code, we have rules saying they have to have a hard surface approach. And, and that one in particular was missed. The, the hard surface approach isn't in this section, it would be in a, let's see. I, I know it's in here, it's in a different section though.
Okay.
But I'll keep an eye out for it.
Thanks.
I think it, well, B signs, sign shall conform to the standards contained in chapter seventeen point five zero. C fencing fences shall conform to provisions contained in section seventeen point five two. D landscaping, landscaping improvement shall conform to the provisions contained in section seventeen point five four. E yards and lots, yards and lots shall conform to the provisions contained in chapter seventeen point five six. And F other, a property owner is advised, other regulations may apply for, may apply for property in an identified natural resource area, section seventeen point two eight. The flood hazard area, section seventeen point three zero and in or near an identified historical site, section seventeen point three two.
All right, so it looks like a pretty good stopping point for today. Does anybody have anything to discuss or talk about that is not on our agenda plan or code review process for this evening?
What kind of applications we have coming?
We have, um, off the top of my head, three conditional uses and a property line adjustment. I can say what it's for, can I? For a medical facility, um, and then, um, property line, another property line adjustment, I think a partition. There's a couple more, but I just got them in, so I haven't reviewed it all yet, so.
Yeah, stay tuned, um, I believe this week there will be an announcement that Samaritan will be making, so. We're excited.
Yeah, so the July meeting, you guys will, you'll get the conditional uses on the agenda, so.
All right, I guess with that being said, we'll adjourn June, June seventh meeting, uh, eight o'clock.
We, oh, today is June seventh, you're adjourned at eight o'clock, yeah. Sorry, I was thinking to the next meeting, I'm like, we're not starting the next meeting at eight o'clock. But the next meeting will be our first Thursday, our first Thursday evening meeting, so. And we're sticking with six thirty, right? Yes. Just make sure we're not, I'm not confused.
And if you didn't get the schedule, I sent out schedules to everybody, so if you didn't get one, let me know, or you lose it, let me know, so, and I'll send you another one.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, I'm going to shut down the recording now.
Thank you.